Call the Halsey City Council meeting of August twelfth, twenty twenty five to order at seven P M. Brown, please call the roll.
Yes, Councilor Cropp.
Here.
Councilor Boyes.
Here.
Councilor Isom.
Here.
Mayor Lockenbrath.
Here.
Councilor Strauss.
Here.
Councilor Miller.
Here.
Councilor McCost.
He's ready for the phones. Let's lead us to the flag, United States of America, two republics for which stands one nation under God indivisible, liberty and justice for all. I want to thank you all who took time to attend tonight, any guests who are physically present need to fill out the meeting sign in sheet. And we're once again running a hybrid meetings to continue allow those who wants with time remotely to do so. Cut down on background noise and feedback, remote attendees should mute themselves while not speaking. Staff members and guests on the agenda will need to unmute themselves to give reports to council. Audience members may unmute themselves to speak during public hearings and during citizen comment period. Next item, next item of the agenda is council minutes from July eighth, twenty twenty five. Any questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion.
I move that the governing body of the city of Halsey approved the July's. City council minutes as submitted.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda. Is agenda adjustments? Okay. Then moving on would be the financial statements. For July twenty twenty five, any questions, comments, discussion? We're in a, entertain a motion.
I move that the governing body of the city of Halsey approved the July twenty twenty five financial reports and journal entries as submitted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So next item on the agenda is delegations and Sheriff's Office is not here quite yet. Brownsville Times is. You want to do a presentation?
Do what?
Did you want to do a presentation?
Yes, I have a presentation.
Okay.
So. Oh, say that exists just in. Okay, so my name is Sharon Banks. I'm the chairman of the board for the Brownsville Times. The Brownsville Times is not just for Brownsville, but it's all up the Central Lynn area. Clear up to tangent, Halsey, Shed, Brownsville, Crawfordsville, downtown. So we're encouraging everyone to sign up for a subscription if you can afford it. We took over the paper because the last guy that ran it went bankrupt and the paper was shut down just all of a sudden without any notice. And so a group of us got together, we're all volunteers and we put the paper back together. Prior to professional, I think you'll see that the paper's off. So. I kind of said this already, but we have a seven member board. We are a five oh one C three nonprofit organization, so any donations or anything like that that comes from the paper is tax deductible. We really want to save, wanted to save the paper for a number of reasons, but get into that in a minute. The part of it is just preserving our history. You know, if you go into the library or into the Fogo Museum in Brownsville, you will find copies of the Brownsville Times that go back to eighteen eighty seven. This is where we go when we want to find out what was happening in the area. In whatever year, you know, so it's a huge historical legacy. We want to keep that so that we've got a legacy when people want to look back fifty years from now. And want to find out what our lives were like, what we were doing at the time. So we've been in business for a hundred and thirty six years. We documented so many stories and we're bringing alive some of the old stories, bringing them back, you know, where were we a hundred years ago, that kind of thing. So it's really kind of fun. Local journalism is really important and part of the reason is that, you know, if you, if you're a Facebook fan, you get on there and there's all kinds of trolls, there's all kinds of advertising, there's all, you probably won't even see what we wanted to see. And then if you ever wanted to find it again, you can never find it. So it's just nice to have a local paper that just has local things in it, you know. We can be a platform for community voices and we do have a correspondent here in Halsey. She's the clerk that works at the post office, Kylie. And she has news tip forms for Halsey, so if anyone has news tips that they want to get in the times, just go over there and she collects them and I collect them for her once a week. So if it's really something that's time sensitive, then you can always call us or email us and we'll get on it right away. You know, new, good news tips or things like births and marriages and obituaries. Just general things, or if you have an idea for a story, you can also just submit it on our website. It's brownsvilletimes.org is our website. So we'd love to have more involvement with Halsey and more subscribers. We already have quite a, quite a few subscribers from Halsey, but we're hoping to increase that. So local businesses also rely on the paper, especially in our communities where we have so many older people. You know, they don't tend to look on the internet to try to find a contractor, to try to figure out where they might want to go eat or where they might want to stay. They tend to look in the paper and look in the business pages and get someone there, you know, so. Also, we do have an online version of the paper. So we have both digital and print. The print one is, comes out every week. Well, they both come out every week, it's the exact same paper, but the digital one is a lot less money for people that just don't want to have a paper, but the vast majority of the people that we've signed up so far want the paper paper. They want that, you know, crossword that they can actually write on and can sit down with a cup of coffee and read a fun article or whatever. So we're, we're encouraging civic engagement. We're going to cover local elections, town hall, those kind of things in a way that national media does not. And in fact, we are completely staying out of politics. That is just not where we want to go. We just want to talk about what the events and all the fun that we have here and how great our communities are here in the Central Lynn area and about our kids and our sports and all that Central Lynn, so. We want to, and this is a cool picture. This is from eighteen eighty seven. This is a pioneer picnic in eighteen eighty seven. And it, the paper started at about, just about the same time as the pioneer picnic started. And then this is a more recent version with my buddies from the American Legion there leading the parade. So the paper, it fosters a sense of belonging. It keeps residents connected to their neighbors and to their town. And you know, our subscription rate, we hadn't raised it because clearly the last paper was not doing well at the price. So it is eight dollars a month for the, for four issues mailed directly to your home. The digital version, if you just want that, it's just three dollars a month and that is a bargain. People that can afford it, they can always get the digital one if they want to. We also have a program that we're just starting have that is a pay it forward. And it's where we are working with Meals on Wheels and some of the senior center in Brownsville to identify elders that can't afford the paper. And we're allowing, we're asking people to buy an extra subscription and then we will match it up with someone indeed. The paper is so important to elderly people who don't necessarily have computer skills. They wait for that paper. I've had many, many elderly people to say, you know, it's the highlight of my week. I can get that paper and I can find out what's going on. I can see what's, you know, where my friends and neighbors are. So anyway, we are, this is where we've come since March. We just organized in March. We've hired a fabulous editor. Her name is Michael Stoll. And she is one amazing lady. She puts all that paper together with the help of about forty writers. We've put out a call for writers and we've got some amazing accomplished people that write for our paper. Many of these are published authors, people that have amazing skill sets and we are really appreciative. They're all volunteers. So we have one paid employee, that's it. But it is still expensive to print the paper. Paper's gone up and printing is gone up, posters has gone up, you know, everything has gone up. And so, you know, we're, in order for us to, to really be sustainable, we really need to get to about eight hundred subscriptions. And we're already almost halfway there. There's only about one in four households in the whole Central Lynn area and we're really going to push to try to get there. There, that's what we need to be to be sustainable without asking for money. You know, so. And a lot of people have been very generous. They've given an extra hundred dollars or, you know, some, a few people have given an extra thousand dollars just to get the paper. We really appreciate that. So we just want to have a thriving community newspaper and don't be fooled by the name called Brownsville Times. Because we try and get the name just the times, which it always was. But unfortunately, the last guy never paid the bill for the name and somebody bought that name. And we couldn't get that name back. So that's why it was called Brownsville. So here's how you can help. Subscribe. I've got subscription forms there. Sign up your neighbors. Give generously. Donations, anything over the cost of a subscription is tax deductible. You can round it up. You can sign up to be a writer, photographer, or help with administrative duties. We have that, we're trying to keep the office open about three hours a day. We don't have quite enough volunteers to do that yet, but we're getting there, you know. People are really having a lot of fun with it. So we are, with our subscription drive, we're asking every subscriber to try to find one more. Because if they can find a friend or a neighbor or gift a pay it forward to somebody, we could double our subscriptions overnight and we would be darned close to where we need to be. This is the pay it forward I was talking about with offering subscriptions to seniors. We're going to be going around to some of the neighborhoods in Halsey, Brownsville, tangent and just talking to people. And that will also flush out some people that really truly can't afford the paper. So we're going to be signing those people up and also signing people up to help out those people. You know, it's a neighbor helping neighbor kind of thing. And so that's about it. Do you have any questions?
What's the deadline? Like, when do you print?
The paper comes out every Thursday. So if you get your subscription in by Monday morning is when we put the mailing list together or add all the new ones that came in that week.
But I'm saying like if you want to put in a, yeah, put something in it, what's the?
Usually by the weekend before Thursday, but if it's what we call breaking news, I'm actually in charge of the committee that does breaking news and so those are the ones that happen on the weekend that we want to give them basically. So many times late Saturday night, Sunday, I'm working on breaking news, something that just happened or, you know, some event that went on, that kind of thing. But I also write the critter chronicles, which is stories about pets. And if anybody has any stories they want to share, just give me the basic details and I'll write it up. It's really fun. Okay.
Yeah, what else?
Thank you for taking this on and reviving it and keeping it going. It's, it is nice to have it.
Challenges.
Yeah.
We got, I'm, I'm trying to stay ahead of the money, so I'm trying to get, right now we've got a couple little campaigns going on. One is places to eat, so we're going to try to get all the restaurants within like twenty miles to put in a little ad. That would really help. So plus it'd be great for people to, oh, I never heard of that. I didn't think about going that a place, you know. And then the other thing we're doing is a shopping list for sharing hands. And I have a donor who doesn't want to advertise his fitness because he's four months backlog with work. And he's going to pay for the ad for sharing hands to have a little shopping list of all the things they need. And then two grocery stores have said that they will advertise and have specials on those same items right next to there, will drive people into their store.
Right.
You know, so that, that's something.
Oh, that's good.
Did you talk to my wife?
Your wife?
Grocery deals, Heidi?
Yes, well, I was out there. I didn't talk to her, but I talked to the candidate and she said she was going to give that to Heidi. The information, so she should have it. But yeah, you definitely were one of the guys of the grocery outlet. Were ones that we wanted to have. Kind of the more discount stores, you know, people can afford to buy more. But I think it would be a good project. All right, well.
Thank you very much.
Happy.
Thank you. Next up is the Sheriff's Office, seeing as somebody's just snuck in here.
Standing around the corner.
Yes.
I'll make it quick because I know you guys have a quick agenda and I don't, I don't really have a ton to talk about. I think we mentioned that last city council meeting, the crash on there, that was the building being hit here with the the elderly female. The arrest, the stop. By our standards, it's an arrest. It's not a criminal arrest though. Blasphemy. I took an elderly female in custody or someone accused. We call those POHs, police officer holds, under the statute in order and allows us to take people in custody and make them stay in the hospital if we believe they're a danger to themselves or others. So that's what that arrest was. It wasn't a criminal arrest. It was just a female that needed some immediate mental health assistance. And then, dude, I guess the other notable holiday incident were two dogs that fought, yes, at the bar.
At the bar, yeah.
I don't know the outcome of that. I think one dog was injured, but that's not criminal violation. Just don't, don't bring your dogs to bars, I guess.
No, don't get liquored up.
Um, not a, not a lot going on. All the cities were kind of like this. We met hours, but again, a lot of our resources have been pulled from the cities, especially during the summer with all the the bad things we've had happen in the county, all the fatal crashes and suicides, overdoses, the mountain rescues, the drownings, like it's been, it's been pretty crazy. Probably the busiest summer that I've ever experienced here for fourteen years. Like we're averaging one to two fatal crashes a week on top of all the other rescues and, and whatnot. So we've had multiple I V issues, having nine. We had, we had a fatal towards Harrisburg on time of nine nine. We had a fatal on Riverside on Thursday. It's just, it's crazy. Those are investigated like five or six different deputies or detectives. So everybody within forty miles kind of suffers when we have a crash of that magnitude. It's just a nonstop. So ready for fall, getting to go back to school, weather cooled down.
Maybe.
Classic football, yeah. Yeah, hopefully it tapers off. But just, I feel like when it starts earlier, more people are off road.
Yeah.
People may watch their speed a little more if the weather starts to turn, but yeah, it's been busy. It's been, it's been hectic.
I'm going to just say something. I had to call nine one one this morning. I had like the best experience speaking with a nine one one operator this morning. She was awesome. And then also deputy, I think it was Campbell. Is that who it was? Okay. He was awesome too. He called me twice. He, him and I were following each other around looking for the guy and stuff, but it was just a really good experience, I guess. I mean, if you have to call, you have to call, but.
Yeah, it's actually is a pretty thankless job. They don't have workers and they get yelled at all the time.
Yeah.
You know, there, we go to a traumatic scene, right? But they don't get to see it. They're just hearing about the mom calling about her son, you know?
Yeah.
So that's pretty tough. So we try to give them feedback as the, as what the scene looked like or, you know, if it's appropriate, like give them pictures or don't come to you right along every so often. Yeah, this, I could never beat this better.
Yeah, no. No. Yeah, I don't know. I never didn't catch her name, but just she was very polite and calm.
I have an idea who, who it probably was.
Yeah. Okay.
Give her a pat on the back.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can see.
Like I said, I'm just throwing that out there. It was, both of them was a good experience.
Yeah.
Questions, comments? Well, that's good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let's keep, oh yeah, let's keep it boring.
You can.
Can. We can do that.
You say.
Okay, appreciate it.
Alright, thank you. A C to walk the pen?
Did it?
It's all of a sudden got really warm.
So the next item on the agenda is citizen comments. It's time for interested citizens and anyone in the audience to address the council on any item up.
Just to be able to turn down the thermostat, about fifteen degrees.
Yep, we're gonna. Okay, that it? Moving on. Time is reports of council and we'll start off with a city administrative report.
All right, so once again, Halsey Summer Barbecue is always twenty seconds, not this Friday, but next Friday. And we are doing a food driver sharing hands. Council voted to go ahead and move forward with that this year. And so we're actually put together a little family fun movie night basket. So it's a copy of the movie that we're sharing. Get popcorn, like just a little prize and we're going to give raffle tickets to people who donate to sharing hands to hopefully advertise and drive engagement in that. And then the other thing is that this is a bit of a long day for us. We are close, city hall's close to the public that day. And so staff come in, starting at noon, sort of mitigate such a long day. It's still okay. And it also gives us the opportunity to just like focus on crab slicing, like we're literally slicing tomatoes and onions, doing that kind of stuff, washing, chafing dishes. So we'll be doing that here. The places where we could really use extra hands. After last year, learning that like where the time slot that it's most helpful is really between five thirty six ish when the event starts to about eight P M. So like right when the movie starts and that's things like helping restock the buffet line and then right out when the movie starts, we do our best to clean as much up as possible. And so we're hauling things back to city hall. So we will happily take any volunteers. You can come even for an hour and help out with onsite stuff. We've had some people in the past kind of help out in our little like kid zone to sort of make sure that the kids don't completely leave with our things. You know, with this little stuff. And so I invite you to join us. It is a fun time. Next up, info and infiltration. And so we've been talking about this problem for a long time, finally getting it off the ground. We've met with an engineering firm to get a poker services. We gave them our I and I study to sort of like kind of map out what we were looking for and they came back with a bid for services. They are on par with the industry rate. They came recommended from other cities that I know the manager was someone I trust. We're just wanting to sort of deepen our bench in regard to finding civil engineers that we like working with. We did start out by reaching out to Devco, which is our engineer of record. And Devco is really great for some things, but they actually just didn't have the capacity right now to take on this project. So we had to seek additional bits for that. We, because of procurement law, we can move forward with this kind of service with a direct procurement. We liked the conversations that we have with them. The bid is on par with rates for this kind of service and in fact, kind of on the lower end of what is generally the cost for these kinds of things. And so I would be happy to move forward with them, but I, you know, open to councils and come up. Any objections, I guess.
I, you know, I've talked about it quite a bit and I, I don't think there's any reason to not.
Yeah, we really like to see what it's like to work with a new firm and just kind of see how we like working with them on an official project because really we have so many projects coming up in the next five to ten years. It gives us some new experiences.
The thing that I think council needs to remember is that Devco has not been a bad partner.
No.
In fact, all the partners we've dealt with, those have been really good partners. It's just they're getting very, very, very busy. And they still have a deep bench. So they're working with what we got. So we need to increase our bench, as it were.
I trust you.
Well, I appreciate it. So if there are objections, I'm going to follow up with them and tell them that we're ready to move forward and essentially they're ready to start a process of surveying, design, conversations with us over the winter and procurement as well during that time. And this is the kind of project Andy has this solid, right? He, I guess these kind of projects are best to do in the spring because then you can actually like see where the water's coming into the system. And so that gives us a good timeline for actually breaking ground and we should be at that place, having this all this time through all the winter to do designing treatment. The well project. So we talked about this a little bit. We have to do an additional test for permitting. And that test is where we have to show that the pumps working together can achieve a certain flow rate per hour for, for continuous hours over, you know. We met with several last year engineers and T S I about this and we kind of talked about the cost to do it. So we're not doubling our efforts, double spending money, et cetera. But this is also the design is almost there, but we just are not at a place where one of the things that got kicked around is doing a pitless adapter and part of that came about because we were trying to cut costs in the original bid when we very first went to bid on this project. Like there was, at first the well location was kind of way further out in the middle of the shopyard. There was a building. It came in way over budget, so we're like, let's move it closer. And then as part of that conversation, we started designing it as a pitless adapter, but we've never been totally sold on that because we don't necessarily like the idea of all the components that come up out of the wellhead being essentially underground. And so we kept kind of being like, do you have pictures? Can you show us what this looks like? Or, you know, let's talk more about what this looks like. So we know, you know, there are certain components that have been designed, but are not like final designed. And so and during this process, we reached out to a few boil drillers to ask them about quotes for the cost to do a temporary just to run the test, just so that we can appease our permit before the deadline. Install it. Install it with the pitless. And the permanent installation of an above ground came in at forty and the pitless that jumped up to like almost a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And so we're backing off of the pits, right? Like that's, I was like, the whole point was to save money. Why are we here? So when we came also at the initial was there was some miscommunication in what it was going to cost for a temporary. So at first they said temporary was going to be forty K. And we were like, well, we're not wasting forty thousand dollars.
Right.
When we started coming back to the table, we started and saying what we really, really needed to achieve in this test, we're getting rates closer to two to three thousand. That is money so that we can get the right design and not rush this step of the process that we can swing. So I've reached out to two additional well companies to get quotes for this service to get a really solid idea of how much it's really going to cost. And we are going that route instead because again, this design thing. And we are going that route instead, because again, this design thing. I don't want us in a situation where we're settling for a design that isn't what we actually really want or need. Especially when we find out the design that they have been pitching us to save money is going to be a hundred thousand dollars. So.
We don't have them as it is.
Yeah, we're backtracking, we are going to take our time with this design. We are going to get it right, and we are going to make sure that we appease D Q. And then the other conversation that we will revisit, I'll have more information next month. But I have re-engaged with Biz Oregon, and Biz Oregon is somebody that we talked to in the, when we were like. We're writing grants, we're doing a lot of things, and that's for gap funding. And so we've identified a pretty solid potential source of additional funding, but it wouldn't be quite enough. To totally do it, right, so there's still kind of a gap for us, and we've been very successful in this project, getting a lot of grant funds for this. And so I'm meeting with them Thursday morning to revisit what it would. Cost the city and essentially our citizens, if we were to do like a hundred fifty thousand dollars, sometimes those are partially forgivable. At the low rates, similar to our I N I project, or the gap funding, because if we. I don't want to put us in a position where we buy out the reserve and we're not prepared for the next thing. And so I'll have more information about that after Thursday. Um, and you know, send out updates to council when I know more, and then we can discuss it in public.
Do you know how much that kept?
Between a hundred and fifteen, two hundred thousand, if we're talking about, um, and also I'm still writing grants. But, um, I, I think that I'll be looking around. Uh, just to make sure, because every single part of this project has been more than you, that. Yeah, um, it's a lot less than the, you know, five hundred thousand that we thought we were short. So, it took me away, we're getting there. Yeah, thank you. Um, city ordinance enforcement, so today we went to court, um. Audrey joins me because she does enforcement actions and sends letters, so she's, you know, very engaged in the process, Mara joined me as well. We, it was essentially like an arraignment, they complete guilty, it was kind of like traffic court. Um, it's just a municipal citation for uh, ordinance violation for a property in town that has excessive. Broke down vehicles and stuff in their yard. And so as a part of that, essentially they were just fined, they, they did not ask to hear from the city, but we wanted to be prepared. Um, and so, eh, the, they were fined, and they were reminded that. This could be a continuous fine, and so they need to make sure that they're not continuously breaking the ordinance, um. This has been an ongoing property, we are not. Sure if we will see them come into compliance, rather than just pay the fine and see if that makes it go away. So the city is now researching abatement, um. If abatement is not a good option yet, again, that continuous fine is on the table, and so. We can, so if we don't see improvement, we can, again, issue it, ask for another citation to be issued, and just kind of keep going back to court. Until the judge says, hey, you've been here a lot, and we might see some traction that way, so those are the two options that we are pursuing. One, you know, there's not really upfront costs on the city's part, it's just staff time. To show up for these, you know, these citations at court and make sure we're prepared, and if the judge wants to hear from us. Um, and the other option, abatement costs us money, and so we've just begun that research on cost, and. I think that I've identified, like honestly, at a maximum. Five thousand dollars that I think that the city could afford to spend on that in this moment, and, and anything beyond that, and we need to seriously discuss. It would be uh, identifying uh, some of the discarded vehicles on the property, and we would essentially cite the property. They would have an opportunity for appeal, appeal comes before council, and then you move to literally towing off of their property. Yeah, so you remove the property, and then it goes to a tow yard, and then there's, you know, they have to hold it for a certain amount of days. Um, and then, you know, things can go to auction, like you lost entirely.
How many times have they been cited now?
Over the years?
Yeah, wasn't this like a five year deal, we've been?
Five years, two citations.
Two citations, so this is their third?
At this location.
This is their second, okay. What'd they do the first time, do we remember? Been fine in order, okay.
Was that an indication that now?
I mean, history was just. So we're just trying to be prepared, um. I think that I would just kind of want council's input, if we find that we are able to move forward with the base and consult these. Support of, of us spending that money on it.
If we go forward with abatement, is there any, like increased penalties, or if they just like load it back up with vehicles? Yeah, does the abatement do anything, like could we literally, you know, spend three thousand dollars abating it to have it look the exact same in six months?
It could go back to justice court, and the judge fits, could, most likely would see it as. A persistent and ongoing issue, and then take a next level on the courts.
So this fine is not able to just every month? If they don't change anything, doesn't it keep on going every month, or not?
Yeah, and so we have continuous fines listed in our. Uh, citation, and so it's actually in daily. Two hundred and fifty? Five hundred a day?
How much did they pay the first time?
The first citation was just under two hundred dollars, the citation was two hundred forty five. And again, like she said, the judge done some of this, this is not going to pay. They could be back, they don't fix the situation, so the judge knows.
And the judge is allowing a payment plan. Or the judge is allowing a payment plan, okay.
The risk in these situations is that.
Yeah.
That's, that's the risk, if we can't, we can't benefit from the total of vehicles. The, the best we can do would be to give them to, uh, collections and or, but uh.
Both are, both of those actions are allowed, so they could actually go to collections and. It's a waiting game though, you know? So. I think to do nothing sends a different kind of message, because this has been so ongoing, um. My recommendation would be to move forward with either continued citations and that research around abatement. And potentially payment, and just being mindful of, uh, you know, we've, we've talked to some folks, our, our legal. Uh, you can do partial abatement, so that you can stay within your budget, so those things are options, you can say, we're going to start working on getting this thing under control. And we know. Three out of these six.
What would seem like I would, I would try a few more citations, and then if nothing, then I would look maybe at a bait.
We can do that, uh, the other issue is that we're getting more. Community members are getting complaining about it, for example, why should I deal with it? Do it, take care of my stuff, they don't have to, so.
Yeah, and the length of time, too, the length of time seems.
And they, they had another location in the same situation there too.
So we can be here to. Do more research on the cost of abatement and come back next month, and in the meantime, issue additional citations.
Yes, yeah. Right, well, you should look at partial and full abatement.
Okay. And when we talk about this, is why like, when I've talked about whole setting, I think this is a good conversation for us to have, as. Of the financial impact to our budget. We do these things, but they're, they're probably, off the top of my head, four properties, I mean, nobody's going to have maybe. The perfect yard or the perfect, like maybe, you might want to keep it, you might, you know, but. That's not the issue that we're talking about, we're talking about properties that are like. Problem properties that have a lot of rubbish, like a lot of broken down cars, not just, you know, a trailer and a boat. You know, those are things that we're not, you know, we're not.
Allows for road reading as well.
What's that?
Allows for opportunity for reading roads, so. And I think it's a situation where the city has for many, 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 many years. I won't say chosen to ignore it, but didn't have the wherewithal to, to do anything. And we're, again, another situation where it suddenly comes upon us to like to buckle up, take care of it. Kind of like we're doing with the infrastructure and things like that, that, you know, got a lot of hard stuff to deal with, and. Doesn't get it done now, they're kicking it down the road for somebody else.
All right, so moving on to some fun stuff. We got a donation this past week from Georgia Pacific. Could donate five hundred dollars to the Halsey Public Library, they continue to stand up and support to our library. Um, over the years, and it's going to earn us value, and so their donation will go towards books. And also towards uh, our, our programs of that. More products, the park project, uh, the pathway, we met with the contractors, we talked about. You know, replacing in place and some solutions for root issues on a couple of trees. This sadly are probably on the chopping block, there's, they're down in the south end, one is next to where the. Path comes off of ninety nine and enters into the park, and it's right there by the escape park. And then the other one is on the corner closest to the basketball court, and the roots are. Really, really damaging the path, and they're very surface rooted, just that because we have no weather shade at that end of the park. We are waiting to remove them until those trees that were planted as part of the Arbor Day stuff, uh. They give them time to get a little bigger and replace some of that lost, that shade that we're going to lose. So they are sadly on the chopping block, and so we talked about some of that, like mitigating damage to the path until we're ready for that tree removal. Um, where we wanted locations for the tip outs for the additional benches. And then also, we talked about park closures, and so that is going to have a really, really huge impact on park use. There will be periods of time through the project that it will be entirely closed. And so the early part of September during demolition, we can count on the park being completely closed, we talked with them about the park path. Like the actual pouring of the cement starting on that south end, so that we can get that section reopened sooner. Um, while they continue to work on the other part, uh, we will use caution tape, any construction fence that we have. I mean, they'll bring stuff too, they've got an obligation to do that, but. We're not going to necessarily construction fence the entire site, we're going to use signage, we're going to use caution tape, we're going to do some, especially up. In the south area as best we can, taping off, um, like the playgrounds and stuff, just because that will further discourage. People coming outside, it's going to be fantastic when it's done. It's hard to lose access to the park in September, when we still usually have really great weather, but if we wait any longer, it's cement, so it needs to be before the rain. Um, so that is coming soon, we are waiting on our official start date. And we will make sure to do signage at the park in the week leading up, so people know that closure is coming on our media platforms. And then obviously, the very obvious signage and stuff that will take place when there's full closure. Um, climbing structures and other playground equipment, and so Public Works is going to be installing the climbing structure later this week. There will be a portion of the playground that will be closed for that work, and then it will have to cure, and so it will be closed for a few days after it's been picked up. They'll use the same construction fencing as the signage, this is don't touch it, uh, and, and we will. And so that is going in, and we're excited about that, it's very cool, they, they tried to put it together at the shop, thinking they put it together and then move it. And then they're like, oh, that's not going to work, so they're starting to do, they're going to put it together on site, um. Also for the exercise equipment, uh, that will be later in the fall, they'll work on that. We identified a place along the path that's midway between the baseball diamonds and the, um, swings. For that, one of the things that we've gone back and forth about is where will they get the most use, right? And so we've talked to like parents and stuff like that, and a lot, there are people who wanted them further from the playground, will be heard from. People also that they would get more use if they could actually see their kids play, like they would utilize them. So we identified that, that is not set in stone, so if there's anybody who has additional feedback on the location of those, we are still. Taking suggestions, but initially we were thinking maybe pouring additional concrete underneath them, and we decided that. Once the concrete's there, that's permanent, or that's a lot, it's a lot harder to change. And so I would like to pursue looking into grants for that rubber surfacing, because that provides that same accessibility. Because the bowl of those was to also provide, it meant it was like accessible, there's like a hand cycle and some things that would be for people to maybe use canes or wheelchairs. So they can still get access to those things, and I think that surface would be safe. If they climb all over and fall, cement might be a little rougher for them. So we'll do bark until we can, um, get something that's a little bit more mobile and accessible. Uh, multi-use courts is the one challenge that we're really, really having on this project, uh. The challenges have been locating vendors who just paint the concrete. Has been surprisingly challenging, like every vendor that I found are the people who wanted to do that, like sport surface, um. So, I persist, I will find somebody, I have found, um, stencils. Online, so that's an option, uh, reading reviews, they say, not exactly professional looking. Does the job for a backyard court, we do have a pretty light budget for that as well, so for the cost of. Removing the painted surface, repainting it as a multi-use, and then also resealing it. Um, with two thousand dollars, so I think that it also implies that maybe our guys will do some of the work. So that's kind of where we're at, um. But I was hoping to at least prepare the painting, or somebody who just does that, just. If anything has to do with this, like send it my way, I'm open, I have never been to a basketball court or multi-use court, so. I am all ears, um, and then the other trouble is the basketball hoops. Um, I think maybe existed before the court, and so. I've had the guys come out and look at them a couple of times with me, and we are kind of baffled on how we're going to get help, especially without damaging the existing court. And so we're researching, are there just the hoop pieces that are up and down, to see if that's an option, or using existing posts? Um, and again, we persist, so that's where we're at with those, that has proved to be a way bigger challenge than I ever. Thought it was going to be. For basketball hoops though, we have like four thousand for basketball.
The, the replacement of the hoops has been something that a lot of kids have said that they would prefer just the backboard and the hoops we changed.
Yeah, but for the adjustable ones, um, that's what we're running into, is that we're not necessarily, we're looking, we're not buying just that. We're buying the whole thing. And we are not sure how we're going to get the posts that look permanent. Like I'm not saying they can't come out, but we're not totally sure how. Obviously, everything's possible. Especially because they're right next to where the concrete is, I don't know how possible it will be without actually changing the concrete. For the basketball structure, so it's just going to be a little bit, it's been a puzzle so far, uh, I'll have more updates when we have more solutions.
Oh God, the plasma cutter.
Sure, I mean, coming down, I don't know, next thing goes into that, I don't know. We will do some replacement trees this fall, uh, or we've been waiting for the path project to be complete. Um, we would like to do some trees where the poplars were, um. Honestly, a good tree is a red one, would be a good one, and we have that beautiful red one that was funny, it was like chopped down a bunch of times, there's no power lines over there. So it is appropriate in that space, um, and, and we'll continue to research some other trees, but it's a good time to plant in the fall, because then we get a good start. And then lastly, grants, almost lastly, uh, we have a few opportunities coming up. And so we're looking into applying for, uh, the planning grant for, um, solar feasibility. And so that's going to be, you know, we're looking at the water chop, the water treatment plant, and also potentially cover parking over the back. Audrey did a lot of legwork researching that, and she just put it on my desk, so now I'll just do the grant writing, just fantastic, um. And then the Cassell community award is five thousand dollars, and so that's coming soon as well, and we're looking at either. I'm looking at that pour and place rubber, to sort of get an idea of the cost, I think it's going to far exceed five thousand, um. So the other idea that we had is potentially fencing that stretch or Bow Street, we've talked about several times for safety for those at the park. So we're just getting some ideas for costs, and that will help drive the direction of which one we want to go after. Um, they really focus on things that uplift your community is their whole goal, and so safety at the park. Um they really focus on things that uplift your community is their whole goal and so safety at the park is kind of a visible fund. Project or accessibility for that regard.
Would a reader board fall under that?
Uh reader board could potentially fall under that and reader board's gonna be about thirty thousand probably.
Okay, well then, never mind.
But. Um if we can identify a couple of grants, we could always say this went towards it.
Yeah, I just know that we've talked about doing a new reader board and yes.
So that's something also the SLETS try and grant would probably be because that's a bigger bucket, that would probably be. Guys.
And with SLETS, you can do multiple grants.
Yeah, oh, I guess it does say reader board sign right there. I didn't.
A sneaky Michelle. Uh but it's, there's several and so one of the things we talked about is just the controls, not the upgraded controls, but controls for the water plant. Um which is about fifty thousand, that would again offset whatever gap funding. We need to ask for, which is always helpful, um or that we need to discuss and then um. Again, the rubber surface for exercise equipment and then a reader board sign. So that's September first, we'll be doing a lot of grant writing. And then upcoming events, barbecue movie night, August twenty-second, Central Infancy School early this year. And then uh Labor Day City Hall is closed. Any questions?
Deep breath.
Projects, it's kind of exciting.
Yeah.
Can we put like a text blast out to everyone in the city about the first day of school? Those people forget that they do drop off and pick up on the street now and it is super dangerous the first like month of school for the girls.
Yeah, like a news story, like watch out for kids.
Or just letting them know that like school started and then there's potentially cuz they haven't announced to the parents yet where we're picking the kids up. But last year it was along the side of the school, so there's like two streets. That have stop signs right there and then all the parents are trying to get kids across and like parking different directions, so there's like children running everywhere and people who were annoyed about. Buses and parents parking on the side and they're just like flying down the street not realizing that. Parents parked there for like twenty minutes before school gets out.
Lived on C Street for thirty years now and it's been a hassle every year. It's so dangerous driving.
They couldn't do pickup in the bus loop at all this year, they added a new bus, so all the students come out of the side of the building now. And the bus kids like get walked through the school, so all of that street now. And then like a little bit down Third Street has parents parked there because all the releases off the side of the building last year and they haven't told us if it's gonna change or not this year. And last year it was real dangerous, like the first month or two of school cuz people didn't realize that's what the parking was.
Oh, so something that's like these last uh schools back in session, watch out.
Yeah, caution on like C Street.
Do not drive down C Street.
I'm also changed this year, so last year it's gonna be twenty minutes later, so if people are thinking the first month of school, they can like sneak through it like, you know, three fifteen. Schools out at three twenty this year, so.
Yeah, just like, just go somewhere else.
Right.
Go around. And I'll put you on that same channel.
I do, but I don't drive, I go down a few blocks over and around, I say you do not drive down C Street at school times.
Yeah, I wish all the rest will be all over that field for the school, so.
Right.
Yeah, there was a few almost incidents with kids like running and people not stopping at stop signs.
Yeah. Do they have signage that the school puts out, it's like, you know, crossing guards?
There's a crossing guard, but the. People park basically from the school parking lot, like down the soccer field, almost down by like Fifth Street. On both sides of the street and then a little bit up Fourth and Third. And the crossing guard is the one that's like up by Third Street, so when people are like not coming off of Fourth or Fifth, especially turning up towards C to go to the store. They're just not stopping and like running through the stop signs right next to the school and there's like been kids that have almost been taken out by. People trying to like not have to stop.
They're like over the. Yeah, and there's like three, I think there's like a police truck there as well, no, not, is that?
On the next one, yeah, on Fourth, on Fourth Street, right.
Might reach out and see if they want some additional signage, if we can swing in, so we got her signage going in as well.
Yeah.
Cuz we might be able to help with some of that for the first week, cuz we won't be doing that for a project yet.
Right. And I don't think people realize that school's starting earlier this year either.
If you have kids at school, you know. Anything else?
Of course, report. Any questions, comments?
The ditches have looked really good and the mowings look really good around town. Whoever mowed the park last did a really good job, they actually went like in the middle area, so it wasn't just like super tall and weird patches.
Um for the mowing and stuff, the guys took it over.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The park's been looking a lot better since they took it over.
I already. Glad to hear that, it was ready.
The old landscaper was pretty much like the baseball field was getting mowed, but between the plate structures wasn't being touched at all, so kids would go running and then it would just be like grass.
Yeah. I think it's also been really, really great coming that soon, the summer.
Yeah.
Is with us till I think August twenty-ninth. We're really hoping to have him through the first part of September, but he's going back to college.
Yeah.
That's okay, we knew that that was probably coming.
Uh Third and I, I think it's Third and I, that's a stop sign that's worried to fall over.
Third and I?
I believe it's Third and I, I'll double check on the way home.
We saw it the other day, huh?
It's leaning pretty good.
Okay, Mary will tell.
Yeah, I'll double check on the way home. Also, just see it all the way, yeah? Uh double check there. So perfect. You got a big truck, you didn't. So next is library. Questions, comments?
Summer reading went really well.
It did really, really well.
The kids all seemed to really like it, all the parents who were there that we talked to seemed to really be happy. All the presenters and stuff. Um we're pretty happy then, uh Museum of Natural History actually told us that we were one of their bigger crowds. For some reason, attendance this year at the summer reading programs in general is really down, they said they've had a lot of libraries, that there's been like five kids. Like for the entire program, where in past years they've had twenty to thirty, so they said we were. By far like one of the more consistently bigger ones over the last few years, but this year especially.
That kid, that kid had a really interesting presentation and a really good way of presenting it to all ages even.
Yeah.
I was really impressed with.
A girl who was there with, um she was the one who led led it last year cuz it was in her field. Um so she was able to kind of tell us like the difference between like attendance from the past couple of years and she said weirdly it was down. Pretty much across like the tri-county region, um but she was pretty impressed that the, we had good attendance and how well behaved the kids out here were.
Okay. I know, I was bummed I missed the last two weeks, my grandkids weren't available, so.
And Caitlin already, because this was her first one.
Yeah.
And so I, you know, I've already talked to her and she's already like, make sure I make this and this is my different plan for this, and she's already making her notes. She like knows, like, you know, when you do something, you figure out like what works and what you. She's really thinking about like equity with the kids and making sure everybody's kind of like winning prizes and.
Right.
So I.
Awesome. I was impressed, this is the first year I've ever gone and I went with the first three weeks and it was awesome.
At the last, like, two years, um it's been pretty consistent for attendance, so it's been nice to have. A pretty good group every week, so it makes it easier for presenters.
Yeah.
As we have a hard time, there was like three summers ago, we'd have events where there'd be like three kids there. And if those were good presenters, they're not gonna come back out to Halsey, we had an origami um artist come out, there was two kids there. And she was like, you know, it was fun cuz it was one-on-one, but there was no chance we're gonna get her back out here when she drove down from like Tigerd.
Oh, right, yeah, no.
Where'd she come from?
Tigerd.
Oh.
Yeah, she was in, she was down for the weekend, so she was like, oh, I could do the event Eugene and I just thought, you know, I got a hotel cuz I figured I would do two days and then there was two kids.
Yes. Yeah.
Any other questions, comments for library? The next up is my report. But finally, after a lot of phone tag, was able to. Set a meeting with the interim superintendent, uh Dr. Hess. And he has a one-year contract and hopefully that'll turn into another five years after that. Uh a lot of good ideas, a lot of things that he saw that's. Were being mishandled, but due to funds couldn't get done and so um. Readjusting some of the staff stuff, that's what's going on, a lot of good plans, he's been meeting with all the staff. Getting a lot of good feedback from them, um there had been some that. Chose to not come back and they've now got new staff that. Very, very positive, okay, this is what it was, it wasn't all that great, let's move forward, so that's really positive. Um I want to make sure that the city of Halsey and the school district didn't have a gap in the relationship that we've had. Uh historically, we didn't have a great relationship and it'd be trying to have a really, really good one and they didn't wanna drop the ball on that, and so. I think we're gonna be uh. Pleasantly impressed, uh he does wanna come at some point and talk to council and, you know, introduce himself and. What his goals are, so. And then tomorrow I'm going to Grand Ron Tribe, we have some artifacts that I would be delivering to them. And while I'm there, I'm gonna be talking to their grant people about grant opportunities. They have what they call the small and their large grant opportunities, their large grant opportunities are significant money. So I wanna make sure that I have as much information as I can to come back and. Hopefully come back with a really big check for, that's a big amount of money, you know. Um the SLETS grant, you can have more than one SLETS grant, those are due September first, so. I don't worry out on that. Um I'm gonna get some more information about multiple grant awards, uh last ones we received was just a single. But while I was there getting the presentation, there were other communities and organizations that were getting three and four. So I don't see why we couldn't, you know, find what, what the difference is, what we're doing differently. And and if we get different projects partially funded at least, be quite helpful, so. That's what I have for that. Oh, the annual or the monthly Oregon Emergency Management Meeting. Questions, comments? There is no old business, but we are getting going to new business. And the first one is the applications of street vacation. Do you have anyone wanna add on that, Bill?
Um it's a pretty straightforward and so it is for N Street, which is um there's a. Piece of property that is between um. Fourth and Fifth at the end of Paul, the South End of Paulsy near Old Street and it has, it's. Empty on the side, it's it's a Fifth and on the side that's closest to Fourth that has a couple of small rental houses. And it went up for sale recently and it sold to a developer. And so that developer would like to vacate the right of way um N Street. That goes through that property, we do not have any city utilities, we will do our due diligence to make sure that there are not other utilities in there. Um but essentially all council has to vote on tonight is whether or not you would like the city to proceed with the vacation process. And then we will do the notifications and all the things that need to happen for its public hearing and it will come back with.
I don't see a reason why we.
Yeah, yeah.
Will you let board?
I guess.
Is there, isn't? Is there a reason why there's spots where there's no streets?
Um in general, when you have a development, you might do like grid of what the streets would be. But um if you don't actually have development going through that space, you may never develop that street.
Right.
Um this property owner owns both sides of the right of way and so.
And he can put a, let's say if he wanted to put a house on right there, it wouldn't, down the road, it wouldn't. Okay, yeah.
Oh, so he's requesting that we vacate, so now he can do something with these properties.
Yeah, it just basically eliminates any right of way that the city has on top of where a street could be. Um through that section. It's really the difference of one block versus two blocks that you would go to get around. Um we don't have the sort of any plan to sort of punch it through, there's not, it would not continue through Fifth, there's already houses. If ever anything to the west was ever to be developed, it already would be stopped the other side.
I don't think it was ever planted either, so it's like a reserve.
No.
And sometimes that's for utilities as well, but we, we don't have.
What's the approximate size of that? So sixty foot, well, why?
Yeah.
Right.
I didn't know that was.
And then just to be clear, this one, it's highlighted, is proximate, that's not like in GIS.
Right.
It's just to show both the street view and the satellite view.
And he owns both.
Yeah.
Sides.
Yeah, and so I'm gonna go and see the two tax lots. And they're both owned by the same person and so the way the street vacations work is that. Thirty feet goes to the one, five, five, to the other, but.
Yeah.
So down the line, if you wanted to re-plant and verge and, you know, make this all a bunch of other tax laws. Which if he's trying to develop, probably gonna happen, um then at that point. Cuz that, that that vacation piece is dead and it's not any sort of hindrance to any re-planting.
So we have options of approvals recommended with any approval with any rec amendment. Or provided for dress for staff or to manage a request. First, I don't see a reason why we wouldn't.
I don't see a reason why. Even in the future, it's not like we.
Right.
No, because even straight ahead, yeah. Right.
So basically, look for consensus uh options.
Most.
Most, the most, yeah.
And move that the governing body of the city of Paulsy initiate the proceedings to consider the vacation of N Street between West Fourth and West Fifth Streets. And authorize the city administrator to set a date for a public hearing.
Second. All favor. Question carries. Well, next on the agenda is council OGAC training.
Right, so one of the things that I'm working to coordinate is a training, um all of our counselors, it's a newish. Law in Oregon, all of our counselors have to do public leading law training and it is about two and a half hour training and so in the trainings. They do have webinars available, but they're all in the middle of the day, which presents a challenge for some of our. Counselors that don't have flexibility of their day schedule, they're at work, whatever, so what I'm trying to coordinate is actually a training here on site. And inviting like our, our planning commissioner members also have to come and um. Inviting some of our neighboring municipalities to do sort of like the council, planning commission, offering a training, so we would also. To meet other people in other areas that come, um and they do do evenings and weekends, so we're proposing some evening times. Uh my goal would probably be unless there's some like serious business that we, we really need to meet, would be to do this in like. October and we love doing a regular council meeting. So it would not, wouldn't necessarily be on the same night as council, but it would be a similar time commitment in a evening. Cuz also next agenda item, October is the time that we do um.
That was stunning.
And that's like a five-hour day or so, so um instead of stacking it in, I thought it might be a good opportunity to do this. Council meeting, lots of serious business that we can't wait on. What I'm looking for from council is essentially reviewing these dates and providing. I just need blackouts, so like anything that you're like, that's absolutely not gonna work for me, that's what I really need to know because then we'll set our talk like three dates to OGAC. And try to get it scheduled.
Well, October ninth is a Thursday. That's, I saw that, I was like, what?
Yeah, they're not necessarily gonna be on council, it's gonna be like.
It just says Wednesday.
It says Wednesday.
Oh, and that's a Thursday, got it. Okay, thank you.
Hello, she municipal fundamentals training.
There's, October ninth is out.
The twenty seconds through the twenty ninth of September is. I think that was claimed for John too.
Yeah, that's peak salmon season.
I'd wait for him to catch it, try to cook it.
Talk to our October or September six?
Yes.
Since I, I don't have my children's school schedules yet, if I can't make an evening time, can I do the day webinar still? Okay, because for me that's way easier.
Yeah, and I'll get that info for you, um.
But I have absolutely no idea what any of my weekends or schedule looks like for another like nine days, so I have no idea.
So for the next agenda item?
And then she's just be, no, don't setting, that we do every.
Sounds like September sep- twenty seventh out. Because, yeah, for sure.
I'm out from the nineteenth through the thirtieth, possibly the first. We're doing a big bike ride. I think John's going on.
And these are all Saturday dates because it is like a half day thing and so.
It's very. Good and very informative.
How does October look like for everybody?
All setting.
Looks so good for me.
October what?
I was, that was September.
Yes, but potentially the first could be a part for you guys too, because you might be literally just rolling back in town.
You should be back probably the evening of the thirtieth, but, uh. So, so you got three remaining dates, October fourth, eleventh and eighteenth. What's that look like for everybody?
I've got grandbabies too.
Yeah, October fourth, eleventh and eighteen.
Yeah, or any of those blackout dates, because I still have to confirm with Dave, but that's kind of the windows of time that he's working.
Is Dave able to do it this year? Oh, good. I thought the last time was his last one.
I did, I said, hey, are you, uh, able and he said, let me get you some dates. He asked, go back to me, he's supposed to go back to me. But I, it's meant, so I wanted to get some.
Oh, good.
Present, all three of those dates are okay for me, so.
Well, what about, isn't there a training that we need to do in October? Lock, locker.
The LOC? October ninth, the one up in.
Yeah, oh, so that's another way. So what I'm trying to coordinate is something that comes here two and a half hours and it, um. Meets that training bulk requirement that is for public meeting law. The other thing that we've talked about a few times is the municipal fundamentals, which is like a half day thing. Um, they did one in Salem over the summer. They're doing an online one. But it's like, it's like four hours and they're always in the middle of the week, so just putting that out there, they're doing an online one. And those, it, it covers a bunch of topics, but part of it meets this requirement. So they cover them during that, um. So that is also on the table for folks. The next closest one is either what the webinar. Or in October on the ninth, the next closest one is Lincoln City.
You're going to that one.
October ninth is. Uh, Thursday?
No, it's a Friday, but it starts early, so you have to probably either leave very, very early or go over Thursday afternoon and spend night.
October ninth is a Thursday.
Yeah, it's a Thursday.
October ten was the training.
But it starts at eight o'clock?
At eight thirty eight. So Lincoln City, Carl wants to do Lincoln City.
And you're doing.
I'm already signed up for it. You want to Lincoln City too? Yeah, I'll do that too then.
So we, you would do that instead of the OGAK one here.
Yes, but we would still, so okay.
Or you'd just do both.
I could do both because also it's a good, well, yes, we might do both actually because our planning commission has to come. Okay, anybody who can't do Lincoln City should still come to this other thing if you do home, so. But again, it's a, it's a state law now. Everybody has to do this training, so I'm just trying to make.
Sorry, which training?
This is the public meeting law training is the thing that's required. So the thing that I was gonna bring here to Told instead of the. Council meeting in October is just that training, but if you go to Lincoln City, you do a half day training. Which also covers this training.
Right, so it's like a one and done. Okay, yeah, I'll do that.
Stop, so it is a good.
It is a very good class, it is, especially if you're new, it's very, very good.
We're hosting because we're part of the planning commission and we're also recording with other cities and so we are going to be good. And try to get that off the ground.
Okay, so I'm, I guess I'm flexible, I'm good with whatever.
Okay, so.
I, I'll either come here or go to Lincoln City, whatever.
I mean, if you can go Lincoln City, it is a half day training.
If you are able to do that as a new, newer counselor. The LOC, the one in Lincoln City, it's very, very informative.
The LOC annual conference is here because it's in Portland, it's very expensive. And I got a scholarship last year and you can't usually get scholarships to use in real. Um, next time it's in Eugene, we'll probably do it again, but some of our training budget can then be diverted to these other training opportunities for council, right? Because again, it's like four days in Portland, super expensive.
And, and not a lot of stuff that's currently scheduled applies to us.
Yeah, I've not read it for this.
So Carl and Derek was interested. We can revisit, you don't have to decide today.
Yeah, I'll think about it.
Okay, I know, because that's different, you'd have to leave, so I, I know. And the city is, I spoke to a couple of us. You can just book anywhere, like you can work with me on your hotels and stuff because there's limitations on how much you can spend. It's like thirty hours. You, if you spend more, you have to pay a difference, but, um. But for reasonably priced hotels, this is whoever the travel costs. Okay, so for this, we have no objections for goal setting, fact checking again. October fourth through the eighteenth, those options from the table I can bring us.
So the next item is ordinance and resolutions. There are none. So that moves us to executive session. We're going executive session pursuant to order by statute one nine two dot six six zero I to discuss annual values to the city administrator. All discussions are confidential and those credit means close nothing to the session. Representatives with news media are allowed to attend executive sessions as provided by or by statute one nine two dot six six zero. But must not disclose any information discussed. All, um, all other members of the audience need to please leave the room. We have no colors online. And we will adjourn at eight forty two.